...city or state sweltering with the heat of injustice. Sweltering with the heat of oppression will be transformed into an oasis of freedom and justice. I have a dream that my four little children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. I have a dream today. I have a dream that one day down in Alabama with its vicious racists, with its governor having his lips drifting with the words of interposition and nullification, one day right there in Alabama, little black boys and black girls will be able to join hands with little white boys and white girls as sisters and brothers. I have a dream today.
Mr. Yanis, can you wrap it up, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. Number forty-one Carol Becker, followed by number forty-two Neville Gordon.
Oh, man, you're gonna make me follow Martin Luther King.
Yeah.
Puff me out here. My name's Carol Becker. Most of you have no idea who I am, and I'm totally good with that. I am on the Board of Estimate and Taxation. We set the maximum property tax levy, and we also issue debt. And so I worry about all sorts of boring things that you guys don't. And I'm here today to talk about the capital planning process because I know it's exciting stuff that we have a plan. We have a five-year plan about where we're gonna invest money. We have a citizens committee who is from all over the city who review that. Their name is Capital Long Range Planning Commission, or CLIC, five-year plan. They review all the capital projects and make a recommendation to the city council of what should be done and where we should invest money. Has this come up, has the six-hundred-and-five-million, the thousand dollars come up in the capital long-range planning process? Nope. Nope, just dropped out of the sky. We have a planning process, and we should've been using it. If this was important, we should've coming, should've come through that process, should've been reviewed, citizens would've supported it. It shouldn't have just dropped out of the sky. We do not need to militarize Minneapolis. We do not need to militarize the city. I hate what's going on. Police have to stop running this. We need to start working with the community, work together, make smart investments. What would I do with the six-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars? Park more people? Why don't we do a park? You know what? We don't have enough money to fix the roof. Got a video on YouTube, watching the rain come through one of the park buildings' roofs. We need to put that money where it will help the community. We don't need to militarize the city. Thank you very much.
Mr. Neville Gordon, number forty-two, and number forty-three Mustafa Adam. Mr. Gordon?
Uh, my name is Neville Gordon. I work for Neighborhood Organizer Change. Uh, I've been waking up every day, and what I see in my head is police lights, man. Like, this is so crazy. Like, people waking up every day, you see what's going on, and you don't, you're gonna say it's wrong? It is wrong, but it's only right that we get the right outcome for this. And, ain't gonna lie, when I was in North Minneapolis, every day I was out there. Uh, I wasn't out there tonight, the guy got shot, and I also knew a couple of the people that got shot. And it's like, if I, I stayed at home that night, you know what I'm saying? But I was out there every day, all day, you know what I'm saying? I kinda felt like the mayor, 'cause everybody was walking up to me, you know what I'm saying? I'm out here every day supporting my community, doing something good, and they don't see that. They see the wrong. They see the wrong from the past. I gotta, my daughter, she's one, I gotta tell her that the police is killing people. And I know some people already told their kids that too as well. But, uh, at the end of the day, what I'm trying to say is, man, it's only right we get the best outcome. Uh, I've been in Minneapolis for like, five years now. Uh, and it's just, I've been in Minneapolis five years, and, and I've never seen nothing like this. This is so crazy. At the end of the day, I'm not gonna have to, I'm not gonna have to be scared of the police. When I walk past police car, I'll be like, oh, man, they're, they're gonna get me? You know what I'm saying? It's like, it's, I shouldn't be scared of the police. And for every racist cop that's out there, or cops that's killing people, the ten-thousand lakes y'all go jump in each one of them, 'cause I'm not playing, man. This is so wrong, man. And at the end of the day, I'm down on a lot of pressure right now, I'm gonna keep talking. And I, the police is wrong, and, and you guys need to see that. And, and I'm sweating right now 'cause it's hot, but I'm good.
Mustafa Adam, and then Jacob Lada, number forty-three, and number forty-four. Mr. Adam.
I live in North Minneapolis. I, I think I'm represented by, uh, uh, Mr. Ferry. I'm, I'm just guessing because I haven't seen him representing me or anybody like me since he got elected. We don't need a green zone that's fortified as a, you know, um, as a green zone in Baghdad. We don't need that in Minneapolis. And to the mayor, if you do what you're doing, um, you'll end up like your pal in Chicago. What's his name? Ram? Emmanuel, or whatever his name is. He's about to resign and, and lose his job, and if you keep supporting a corrupted police system, you will end up the same. And thank you.
Mr. Jacob Lada, number forty-four, and then, um, number forty-five is crossed out, so, uh, number forty-six Catherine Door. Mr. Lada.
Jacob Lada, eleven East Thirty-Sixth Street. Man, Hodges. Ninety-two percent of language is body language. I've been watching all of your faces. I see when you look down. I see when you look up. I see when you went into affirmative with that blackmail and show compassion, right? We see a lot more than you think we see. We are a lot stronger than you think we are. My grandfather was a deputy sheriff in Oklahoma City who extradited a UN bomber through his career. My father was a Black Panther. We grew up in a trailer park two miles away from my grandfather's mansion, where the tennis court let us cut down bamboo stems to go fishing. Why don't you start showing your soul? Stop, stop using the custom.
Number forty-six Catherine Door, and then number forty-seven John Stanley.
Thank you. My name is Catherine Door, D-O-double-R. I live at three-oh-eight Third Avenue Northeast. I'm in the third ward. I come today to oppose your seven-point-nine percent increase that I received in my property tax bill for next year. I'll make this short and sweet. In one month from today, I will be sixty-five years old. My tiny savings at the credit union earns less than one percent. My 401K earns two-and-a-half percent, if that. For next year, my social security will have a zero, zip, nada, cost of living increase. I have to keep paying for what I, next year, even though prices are going up, for what I'm still getting. In my thirty-two years of working, I was lucky to get a two percent raise, if that, but only in some years. Yet you ask for a seven-point-nine raise for the city's portion of my taxes. Sorry, I don't have my bifocals. I am not in the half of city homeowners here that are seeing a reduction in their property taxes. And overall, my two-thousand-and-sixteen property taxes are going up nine-point-three percent. This is unsustainable. In October, two months ago, I spent the last of my savings to pay my twenty-fifteen property taxes, and next year, I really don't know where I'm gonna get the money to pay my taxes. In your budget process, I understand you have to balance income versus needs and wants. Funding for city services and improvements must be balanced, must be balanced, with the citizens' ability to pay. Not all of us are benefiting from this economic recovery. Thus, I urge you, I ask you, I implore you to consider our ability to pay, especially as senior citizens and those on fixed income, because you are driving us out of the city by making it unaffordable. Thank you for your time and for giving me an opportunity to voice my concerns, and I'll be happy to talk with you at some other time.
John Stanley, number forty-seven, followed by number forty-eight Caroline Rice. Mr. Stanley?
Mayor, my name is John Stanley. I live at thirty-two forty-one Minneha, Avenue South, uh, South Minneapolis. I wasn't going to speak today, 'cause I was gonna let my people speak for me, and what a fine job everybody is doing. Um, but six-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars? I mean, couldn't you have rounded that up to maybe six and put the five somewhere else? I mean, I'm adamantly opposed to the whole six-oh-five. Another thing I wanted to say is that I've been sitting back here watching forty-six people speak before me, and I'm looking at you guys, our council, our council, and I'm looking at you in the face. And most of you look like you're out there daydreaming, you're not giving the speaker the respect of even looking at him in the eye. When people speak to me, I look at them. You know, I think you're out there thinking more, you know, your Christmas shopping list or something. You're gonna have that little meeting tonight, that little secret meeting, and it's, it's really sad that everything that we're saying and everything that we mean is gonna be for nothing, I fear. I really, truly believe that, because the majority of you don't care. It's written all over your faces, and you ought to be embarrassed of yourselves.
Number forty-eight Caroline Rice, followed by number, oh, I go to number fifty-one Andrew Falstrom. Ms. Rice?
I'm Caroline Rice. Hi, Barbara. I reported some mortgage fraud a long, long time ago that you prosecuted. Meanwhile, I'm gonna talk to you people, 'cause I was hungry and need feeding. I was cold, you kept me warm. I was on the way to my daughter's hockey game, hadn't eaten all day, and I went to just check out what was going on. This county took my five children from me when I reported abuse and fraud. People in prison for eight and seven years. It's not about color. I've been choked. I've been shackled, I've been chained. I've been arrested without a warrant. I've been held on a concrete floor for six days and six nights. And I tried to wrap up my pillow, or blanket, use it for a pillow, they took it from me. I know your pain. People matter. Lives matter. I care. My kids care. Keep going. I'm for respect. I marched with the people the other night. I've been at Richard Stanek's fundraising party. It was a bad idea to bulldoze people's food when you're hungry. I just, I was healed when I walked up there with the people and the police officers. They were respectful too. They let the people protest. This is what we want. I'm not for disrespect, I'm not for violence. Hands are not for hurting. But I just about died laughing when I walked up, and I'm like, they were seeing bitch give me my money. And I was healed. And I just, I don't know why it struck me funny, but this, this is what we have to do, and this is the right thing, non-violent. Talk to the people who are gonna listen. Love wins in the end, only all the time.
Number fifty-one Andrew Falstrom, and then number fifty-two Kaliska Mon. Man? Mr. Falstrom?
Cam, Alondra, Kevin, Lisa, Elizabeth, Barb, Blong, Andrew, John, Abdi, Lisa, oh, shoot, Jacob, Linnea, Betsy. I don't know you all. I'm learning your names, and I'm learning how you vote. Um, I've never spoke at a city council meeting. I think that One Minneapolis is becoming a joke. It has become a slogan, and tonight we're talking about money. And when it comes down to money, reversing centuries of racism isn't gonna cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, isn't gonna cost millions of dollars. We're talking about a long-term commitment to undoing what's been done. Um, and I see the proposed six-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars to create a fortress in the fourth precinct. And I also see Blong and Abdi, that you're proposing cutting fifty-thousand dollars from green zones, or, um, sort of, one, um, concrete tool that's been proposed towards reducing some of the, the racial disparities in environmental racism and the toxic pollution that poisons us all. And I, I think about sort of how those things weigh. Um, proposing sort of twelve times as much money for a red militarized zone when we could be putting money into, and proposing taking away money from a green zone, which could actually help people in my neighborhood in North Minneapolis. And I think all that I have is every, most, I think everything good's been said, and I wanna echo what Nikki Mabry said, is that we'll be there, we're watching how you vote, we'll be at the fundraisers, we'll be at the conventions hall, and we see what's happening on a city level, and you can see that there's rooms, like literally rooms full of people who want change and are expecting change.
Kaliska Man, number fifty-two, followed by Max Power Tree. Uh, Ms., Ms. Man?
Hi, my name is Felicia Mon Price. I'm sixteen. I go to Patrick Henry High School. I work for NOC, which is Neighborhood Organizing for Change. Yeah. And I'm honestly, I'm kinda shy, so I didn't wanna come talk, but I think you guys honestly need to hear me. There should be no reason why I have to go to school for eight hours, then after that go to work, come home, do homework, go to sleep, wake up with the same routine, go back to work. You know how tired I am? Every single day, not mostly every day, I was at, uh, the precinct. I sat there and watched my mother bawl tears. What sixteen-year-old girl wants to see her mother cry? I look up to my mother. You personally, Mr. Johnson, shook my mother's hand, came to the NOC meeting and talked to my mother, and you still look like you do not care. I think it is absolutely ridiculous that out of all of the people I'm looking at right now, to all of you, you can't change the smallest thing. All we are asking is for Minneapolis to be better, for our lives to be better. It is wrong for us to want better for ourselves? You guys teach your kids to stand up for what they believe in, to pretty much let, let people hear them. But you're telling all of us you pretty much just don't care, or showing us you don't care. That is, that is ridiculous. Do any of you have hearts? I know you guys have kids. If you see your daughter standing up here like this, getting ready to cry, I kinda wanna That is, you, you should all be ashamed of yourselves. Each and every last one of you, whether, I just, I can't even get the words out. Like, I'm so disgusted by you, like, I, I just want y'all to hear me. I want you to know that I'm not playing. If I have to come to each and every one of y'all houses and knock on your door, sing to it, sing in your window, I will. This is ridiculous. We need to change in Minneapolis, and you need to give it to us, or you will be gone.
Max Power Tree?
Uh, my name is Max Power Tree.
And then, may I just, um, read the next name, please? Carlos, Carlos, uh, Zingtree, I think is, is correct. So, go ahead, please.
My name is Max Power Tree. Uh, legal name is Mary Ann Baum. Thirty-three oh-one Sixteenth Avenue South. Um, so I have to say, I, I loathe the public speaking, um, but I wanted to add my one or two cents. Um, I turned around on my bus route home tonight to be here, even though I've got this big fluffy cat. She gets really cranky, and I don't get home to feed her by five-thirty, and I've got this leaky faucet for her nose, had to take some emergency Benadryl, which I was really lucky I had in my bag. I'm running out of room, I'm a hanky, my head hurts, blah, blah, blah. But I'm here instead of home. I'm here, um, because this is something big, and my cat and I can put our needs aside for a little bit, because this is something really big. Like, this is historic. I'm outraged at this sham. The proposed budget amendment makes it quite clear that white supremacy is alive and well in our government. In our city government, in our city. And it's not acceptable, not acceptable. So, I hope that I don't have to door knock and phone bank to get new council members elected in twenty-seventeen, because I hope you all are gonna do the right thing with this budget. No money for killer cops, no money for guns, no money for riot gear. Put the entirety of that extra money, which is our money, into the community programs and spaces on the north side, and let the investment decisions be in the hands of the people of North Minneapolis. No more of the state violence against people of color. Every one of you on the city council has blood on your hands, and you can't cover it up. We're onto you, and we'll shut it down. Oh, and my cat is so mad at you, Pong Yang. Two hours' notice is not democracy.
Carlos, Carlos, um, Carlos Zingtree? Sir? Excuse me, before you begin, um, that is the last name that I have, so if anyone would like to speak, um, you can, you can give Mr. Carl your name and speak.
My name is Carlos Zingtree. I live in Tennessee, in Tennessee, Pleasant Avenue, Minneapolis. Better resolution with this picture, please. I wanted to see this picture, because I do oppose the money going to the police, not only the city police, but also the park police. I think, being a resident of Minneapolis for many years, I lived for like nineteen years, and I don't see any diversity in the police department, and I don't know why our money should be invested in, in the police. While the things I'm here, I was not prepared to speak, but I, I, since a lot of people are speaking from the heart, I'm gonna speak from the heart. I'm a person that lived here for many years, and I, I used to work in this organization, the Park Board. When I see that taxes gonna, when they see, when they asking for money for our, our, our mo, from our, our house, from the, the property tax, I don't, I don't agree in that, because this is one of the most racist companies I ever, I ever worked. I'm a person that is prepared here. I had a degree from the University of Minnesota. I worked as a community engagement, and I don't want my money go to departments with, it's very obsolete departments that don't, that have the most inefficient people working there, the most racist people, discriminatory people, retaliation people, and they're still there here asking for money for, from our tax residents. I don't want that, neither as for the police department from the city of Minneapolis. I strongly oppose that, because as a resident, I feel motivated to be, to be here safe, to have our chance for our families, and we do not have a chance. This is very different. I, I thought this city was supposed to be a welcome city. I lived eighteen years, and I'm still struggling here to be treated with respect in all these organizations, being city of Minneapolis, state agencies, or anything. Thanks so much.
Next, I have number sixty-two Brianna, um, looks like Buckhalton?
Yes, Buckhalton. You need my address?
And, um, just a second. And then behind, uh, Ms. Buckhalton, uh, number sixty-three Sandra Jones. Ms. Buckhalton, yes, your address, please.
Ninety-two eighty University Avenue Northwest, Grand Rapids, Minnesota. I'm not from Minneapolis, but I am all for, um, well, all, all against the, the police, like the budget going to the police station, but all I have to say is, you need to deal with us now, you need to deal with our generation, and you need to deal with our, deal with our youth. So, by opening community centers or things that are gonna flourish our future, it's gonna be better than having to put money into trying to protect our future, and by putting up, um, weapons and other things to try and, and jails to put us, you're not thinking about what can we do to make Minneapolis people better and to make them be have, become better in the future, you're thinking about now. But we need to be thinking about not today's satisfaction, but tomorrow. And if you're not with us, you are against us. You may not be the one pointing the gun at us, but you sitting here saying that building this new police station is gonna be okay, and that this, this budget, this money that needs, that's gonna go to that, you're saying it's fine that the police are sitting here beating us and killing us, because if you're not gonna save, if you're not taking our side and dealing with us, you are against us, and you are saying that it is fine that we are dying and we, there's no equality, and that's, that's all.
Sandra Jones, and Sandra is the last person I have, um, signed up, so if anyone else would, would just speak, um, just go ahead. Oh, I guess we have a couple more. Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Hi, my name is Sandra Jones. I'm with NOC, Neighborhood Organizer for Change. My address is thirteen oh-six Zerkes Avenue North. I've born and raised on this north side. Um, and may I state that I have no mother or father, so I was raised by the north side. Um, I just, I wasn't planning on speaking today either, but I just wanted to say, how dare you? Like, and, how dare you guys, like, just completely ignore us? Like, first it was just kill the fair scheduling bill, and then now it's, now it's, let's protect the police. Protect the police? Give six-hundred-thousand dollars to the police? Are y'all serious? Like, is this a joke? Is our life to you guys a joke? Is the struggles that we face on a daily basis a joke to you guys? Are we like the laughing matter, the, this One Minneapolis shit? Is that a joke? Like, what's, what's really going on here? At what point in life does my skin complexion matter to you? You, like, I've sat in this lady's office, and what she said was, oh, we've been hearing from all these business owners, and we haven't heard from anybody of color or anybody else that is affected, and then we sit in her office, and then she cuts us off. And then you, every time we sit in your office, you just cut us off, anytime we try to state our opinions and just block us out. And you guys just continuously block us out time and time again, but we elected y'all. And like, I really didn't care about the whole voting process and everything else that was going on, political stuff, but I'd never realized how much effect y'all really had on my life. Like, all these people homeless and starving and hungry, and y'all just sit up there and just ignore us, and this lady's been looking at her computer the whole time, not paying no attention to anybody that's been speaking, or maybe the words are popping up on her screen or something, but what the hell is going on in Minneapolis, y'all? Can y'all fix this, please? Like, stop ignoring me. I mean, I know I ain't got no student tie on and no five-hundred-dollar pair of shoes like y'all, but damn, am I invisible?
I'm sorry, um, there are other people that have signed up. Stacy Rosanna, followed by Deanna.
Yeah, I've been asking her if she wanted to come on, but he said go to the end. He said go to the end when the, when the people are done, so if she's next, I'll just wait behind her.
There are two other people, too. Uh, Stacy Rosanna, and then?
What is her name?
Deanna, Deanna Gunlap. Ms. Rosanna?
Hi, my name is Stacy Rosanna. Um, I live at forty-eight twenty-nine Thirty-Even, Thirty-seventh Avenue South, Minneapolis. Um, so I've been out at the fourth, and I've been at many of these actions, and I came as someone who, since I was sixteen, identified as a strong DFLer, as a lifetime DFLer, that I would always vote for the party that supposedly helped keep intact the social welfare programs that helped me make it to this place, that helped me get a college education, that helped my family eat. And I am ashamed of my party right now. I am ashamed of all of you who claim that you are DFLers, that you care about our lives, that have used me for a token for years, have asked me to give up parts of myself, to play your respectability politics. I've done it for years. I'm twenty-three now. I started when I was sixteen, and I know that I am a baby DFLer still. And now I don't think that I'm a DFLer no more. And now, I don't think that I'm a DFLer no more. I don't think that I'm gonna be with any of you when the time comes for reelection, and I have the skills. I learned from y'all. I learned from your leadership. And I will be out there come election season, and I will not be with many of you. I will be against you. I will shame each person that I know, that I've organized with, that stands up for any of you, for Mayor Hodges, for our governor. I will shame each person. I know how much it hurts white people to be called racist and to be called on their white supremacy, and I will call it out, and I will name it, because I believe in the power of language. I got disowned from, by my white mother for doing this work, for claiming and for naming that what she is, that ideas that she has are racist and white supremacist. What do I have left to lose? What do I have left to lose? I will be out come election season, and I'll be out before that. I'm starting now. I don't sleep anymore because of what your police force that's supposed to be protecting and serving our communities has done to me. I don't sleep because of it. And with all of that time that I don't sleep, I will be reading, I will be watching, I will be contacting others. I know how to use the van. I know how you organize, I know about the strong ass, I know all of it, and I'll be out there.
Deanna Dunlap, Deanna Dunlap, followed by Hani Ali. Ms. Dunlap?
Yes, my name is Deanna Dunlap. I live at 2951 Bryant Avenue North. I am a citizen of the 4th precinct. Again, I am a citizen of the 4th precinct. I also...